Let me try this again. I was on mute. There being a call in present, let's call this 2021 meeting of town meeting of the town of Burlington to order. Would you please join me in the pleasure of allegiance?
To the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, under God, and the invisible loyalty, justice for all.
Thank you. We have a couple introductory motions to take care of for our business. We're going to roll them into one and take one vote on these. The moderator would consider a motion to conduct this town meeting virtually with voting conducted by Webex poll function and the counts of the deputy moderators in the breakout rooms and a motion to name Bruce Maury, Roger Bell, and David Waddila as deputy moderators and to adjourn until 7:30 May 12, 2021, if we don't get our business completed tonight. I have a motion.
So moved. Second.
All right, Amy should be giving you a chance to vote. And we just want town meeting members voting, not members of boards. Favor, yeah. In favor. Mute.
Has the polling question been sent out? Oh, there it is.
It has now.
Phil, I don't want the satellite rooms to answer.
Okay, the polling has been completed. Could I get the vote from the forest room, please?
Six in favor and none opposed, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Could I get the vote? It's zero. Could I get the vote from the theory room?
Music theory is five in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Five, zero. Eighty-seven in favor and one opposed. Motion carries. Okay. Article two has been withdrawn. Oops, wait a minute. I gotta do Article one. Articles two has still been withdrawn. But let's do Article one. Forces of town officers and committees. Mr. Fegorino, are you there with words of wisdom for us?
Mr. Moderator, we did the budget video. I'm not sure if you just want to play that. I'm not sure if I could say it any better.
All right, we'll pull that up.
Thank you for joining us. The Town of Burlington Fiscal 2022 Budget Overview. Before we start, I just wanted to thank our residents, our elected and appointed officials, and our employees for your patience, your kindness, and your civility toward one another during this very difficult year for all of us. I'm really proud of how the community responded to all the crises we have faced and I'm extremely optimistic for our future. Despite my optimism, we still have quite a bit of work to do to get back on our feet financially, and that is reflected in the budget we are presenting to you now. Okay, the first slide here we have is an illustration of the many steps in the budget process. The starting point is at about 12 o'clock in the diagram. This is the guideline setting discussion that starts in the fall. That discussion is a collaboration between elected officials, the town and school finance teams, and the Ways and Means Committee. We discuss the overall needs for funding as well as the financial constraints that we are working under. We do our best to reach a consensus and as an end result, all parties typically walk away a little bit unhappy, which I take to be a sign that the guidelines are, for the most part, fair and balanced. We are presently approximately 4:30 in the diagram, which is where you will be asked to raise and appropriate funding for our departmental budgets. As you are doing so, you should know that these budgets have been thoroughly reviewed on several different levels along the way. A department first has to present its budget to its supervisory authority. So for DPW, that would be reviewed by the select board and the administration, or, for example, the library would seek approval from the library trustees. The next level of review is by a Ways and Means Subcommittee, which are smaller teams that go through each budget line by line. A lot of questions are answered and modifications made during the Subcommittee discussions. When that part is complete, the Subcommittee then presents the department's budget to the full Ways and Means Committee for another round of discussion. Upon a successful vote at Ways and Means, it is presented to town meeting as part of the operating budget that you will be considering now. Once the budget is finalized, the Select Board needs to determine the local total amount of tax dollars that we need to be raised and how to distribute them over the various classes of property in town at a public hearing on the tax rate in the fall. From here, we prepare various documentation of all these formal processes to be submitted to the state for approval. Once approval is received, the town's tax department can prepare the actual bills for mailing.
Okay, we're not going to go through this 24-minute video. I hope folks have did their homework and watched it online. So, Mr. Fegorino, I'll go back to you and if you just throw out a few summary words of wisdom for us, that would be appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. If I was just to give a few key words, I would just want to let the body know that we were able to meet some very difficult guidelines. The discussion sort of centered around the operating budget that we proposed initially was probably not quite what it would take to maintain level services. So we're able to adjust that upward a little bit. There was a goal also to sort of reduce the town's reliance on the tax levy to fund this budget, and I think we were able to meet that goal a little bit. We went down from a five-and-a-half percent tax levy increase to 4.9% increase proposed for this year. We're very pleased with all the cooperation we got with the budget from all the departments and elected and appointed officials. And we think we've answered a lot of questions over the past week or so that you guys have submitted, a lot of great questions, and we're hopeful that we can have smooth passage of the operating budget this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Ways and Means, Mr. Moran, please.
Hi, can everyone hear me? Okay, so Ways and Means met, starting in January, with the setting of the town guidelines, and we've been diligently reviewing the budgets over the last 12 weeks, first starting off with the operating budgets and accommodated accounts, and then for the last couple of weeks, reviewing all the capital warrant articles. This budget is, I think, as Paul characterized, a really tough budget in terms of trying to address the, some of the environmental situations that we're in with respect to some of the declines in local receipts and hotel and meals tax. And I think we present the budget that will preserve and keep level services throughout the coming year and not introduce any new positions as well as as well as and will not introduce any new positions and keep services consistent. I think in the upcoming fiscal years, I think what's happening right now is that we're starting to see the the pandemic effects lessen and people start to, as people start to vaccinate, people, normalcy is starting to come back, but it's going to take time and it's slow. What's going on now is that we're keeping an eye on the improving economy and also looking at how the assessments are going to come in for the commercial properties with respect to valuations. As I mentioned in the letter that was incorporated in the budget book, we still don't know what the full effects yet are of the work at home and the, how, how the commercial market will rebound. It's time will tell. So the, so the Ways and Means and also the administration is watching this fairly closely. But we have good reserves with both free cash at about 16.1 million and pre-stabilization, almost at 10 million. And so the town has a good plan of utilizing those assets going forward and coming up with plans to prioritize how we use them in the event that we will need them going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. Now, we have two reports from a couple committees, the ISAC Committee and the Transportation Committee. So, Transportation Committee, would you like to give us your five minutes, please?
Sure. We have a slide deck, so Brady could bring that up. And oh, we'll wait for that to come up, but, so I'm Dave Ancamp, precinct seven, and also a member of the Transportation Committee. As you might recall, over a year ago, this committee was formed as an ad hoc committee to look at transportation demand and options here in Burlington. Next slide, please. So just a quick thought experiment set to context. We all own cars, or most of us own cars or trucks and get around Burlington, but what if tomorrow you didn't have one and your car, every car in your household was broken for the next month? What would you do? What would your life look like? Things would start to run out. You'd have to have food and meds delivered. You'd have to beg rides from friends and family. Your life would change dramatically. Without an automobile, you're stranded here in this town. Now, right for us, this is a thought experiment, but for a significant number of people in town, it's an everyday reality. That's why this committee was formed, to think about the problem and the options. Next slide, please. So here's who we are. There's our charter. I want to call out two people in particular. I want to thank Jen Jalinas for all her help as our admin. She kept us productive. And I'd like to thank John Strauss, who was just a Burlington resident, showed up and gave us a citizen's view of the transportation problem. And he's a consumer of the ride-sharing program through the Council on Aging. So he was able to give us a really good perspective on what the issues were. So what did we do? Well, first off, we looked at what had already been done. We looked at a number of studies over the last five or 10 years. Turns out there's an awful lot of work that has been done, so we were able to learn from that. We also talked to regional and local stakeholders. Presumably, people have already been talking about this. They didn't want to reinvent the wheel, if you'll allow me that pun. But then we did our own homework and we created a web survey and went directly to the public to get their opinions on their wants and needs. Next slide, please. So when we looked at the research that had been done, we found a couple of key takeaways. One, there's been a lack of coordination between agencies, between towns, between transportation systems. That's been going on for years. We also learned from the research that transportation is increasingly being seen by businesses as a key success driver, something they look for when they decide to develop in a town or have their workers come to the town. That's particularly important in view of our interest in the life sciences. Now, the needs for transportation of seniors is well-known, well-acknowledged, but what the research also showed is that young people were also in need of transportation in ways that we don't often think about. So it's a much broader problem than we might have originally thought. Next slide, please. So when we spoke to the people who are stakeholders, we heard, again, a lot of common themes. Sidewalks came up again. We heard about the infrastructure here in Burlington, narrow roads, tough-to-make bike lanes and sidewalks. We also determined that there's not a lot of good communication going on between departments and between the town and the public. We heard some compelling stories about how young people, particularly those in high school, are missing out on opportunities because they can't get a ride home. We also determined that there was not a whole lot of regular systematic contact with regional transportation experts, so we're missing out there. But the real takeaway was that we're a disconnected town. We don't have a town center. We've got five of them. So being able to get around town is a critical part of us becoming a community. Next slide, please. So we went to that community and went to the public. We got over 300 responses, which we thought was a pretty good representative sample. And we asked them the same question that I posed earlier in this presentation. What if you didn't have a car? How would you like to get around? And we found a significant majority said they'd rather walk. They want Burlington to be a walkable community. But if they didn't have a chance to walk, they'd be willing to pay for that ride. About five bucks, you know, was, half the people said they'd pay five bucks, some even more. And we've been hearing for years, oh, no, people won't pay for a ride. That might not be true. I think there's a willingness to do that. We also asked questions, if you wanted to go outside of Burlington, would you be, you know, interested in going to some of the regional transportation hubs like Anderson or Elway? And again, just over half said, yes, they'd be very interested. So this is a much larger issue that we're dealing with here. Next slide, please. So to sum it all up, what we were able to determine through all of our research and conversations with a lot of people amongst ourselves is that this town really doesn't have a coordinated transportation strategy. Got a lot of people doing individual things, very noteworthy, you know, great, thank you very much, but there's no coherent strategy to take best use of our resources. We also don't have a viable alternative to what we have now, which is the automobile. It's not safe to walk in this town. It's not safe to bike. We don't have any choices right now. We also noticed that there's minimal regular cooperation with other towns and transportation experts. We have people going to meetings. We have some contacts, but it's not done in a systematic way, and we're certainly not taking the lead. Now, that means that we're going it alone and we're missing out on opportunities and not being taken seriously by the community at large. We also noticed that Burlington's leaving money on the table. There's a couple of programs where money's out there, we haven't gone after it. Safe Roots to School Program. The Sidewalk Committee recommended that we act on that two years ago. It's a free federal program. Still haven't done anything on it yet. Complete Streets Program. Hundreds of thousands of dollars in funding, and we've only got two-thirds of the way. We just haven't closed the deal. That money goes away in a year. So we need to take action on that. And Burlington's putting itself, as a result of all of this, at a competitive disadvantage. And we're going after the life sciences community. Most of that's coming out of Cambridge, where people walk to get a cup of coffee. They walk, they have transportation services available to them. Burlington says, hey, come to Burlington. What do we have to offer? Automobiles, that's it. But ultimately, it comes down to, it's simply not fair. Over the last 50 years, for a variety of reasons, we've created a community where you have to own a car to be a full-fledged citizen of Burlington, able to access everything the town has to offer. That just doesn't seem right to us. So, next slide, please. So what do we recommend? Well, first and foremost, let's go after that low-hanging fruit. The Safe Roots to School Program is a federally funded program. It's free, doesn't cost us anything. All we have to do is say yes. So now we see some movement on that. The school committee, I understand, is going to be talking to these people in a couple of weeks. They should act. Enough talk, let's act. We also recommend that Burlington adopt a cross-departmental transportation strategy. This shouldn't be everybody's fifth job. We've got to work on the work. It's already been done by the master plan. There's over 100 pages of results there. Let's do this in a smart way instead of piecemeal. Now, we already have some transportation assets that we can put to better use, owned by the town or by the school district. We're challenging the Select Board to do an inventory, report on progress, and give us a strategy and a plan this September Town Meeting, 2021. It can be done. The Select Board's a perfect group to do it. They've just named a transportation Subcommittee. We'd like to see that done. This body also has a stake in all of this. So we suggest and urge that town meeting establish a standing transportation advisory committee. So a group of people that would focus on these issues so they can report back to the body on issues of transportation strategy and warrant articles, just as you have the land use committee advising on various issues. This transportation advisory committee could do the same service to this body so we could make intelligent decisions and votes. And most importantly, and probably most controversially, we think the town should name a senior-level transportation coordinator, answering directly to the town administrator, to focus on transportation issues. Go after the money, go after cross-departmental boundaries. One person, one job. Held accountable. Cut through all of, all of the confusion and establish and implement a clear strategy that we referred to earlier. So, next slide, please. Brady, next slide, please. Or I can talk to it. There we go. So now what? Well, don't let it end here. When I stop talking, this committee goes away. We're an ad hoc committee. But it's a community problem. We think the community at large, continue this work. We're all in this together. All phases of government have a stake in making sure that everyone can access what Burlington has to offer. And transportation is part of a much larger question of accessing the town. So with that, we encourage everybody on this call, do what it takes to form that standing transportation advisory committee. We can make intelligent decisions if we focus on it, and this committee could be that focal point. And most importantly, we think the Select Board should become the focal point to act on the recommendations that we've laid out here. Everybody answers up to them. And we think that we've done the work, we've done the research. You can look in your backup. We've got a much more detailed report that gives a bunch of sources. The Select Board's the perfect vehicle to do this. And we were very gratified to see that the board decided to create a transportation Subcommittee. So Nick Priest and Mike Runyon can be the leaders or are the committee and can be the leaders in this next effort. We can do this. They can take up the baton. And we should, should not wait any longer. We've been doing this for years. So on behalf of the committee, I want to thank this body for creating the committee and giving us the opportunity to do the research. We learned a lot. We appreciate the time presenting this to you. We think we've laid out a good plan. It's now up to everyone on this call to take action and move forward. Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it. Back to you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you for your, your report, and I'd like to thank that committee for their their exceedingly high level of dedication. They worked very hard on this project and they have been meeting all year. We owe them, owe them a significant thank you. So thanks. Now, if we could get a report from the ISAC Committee, please.
So, this is Steve Moran, Chair of the ISAC Committee. If you recall, back in June of last year, we had a warrant article to establish a standing committee that would look into information security concerns and that was formed of five town residents and four town employees. That committee got a start after the Attorney General approved the bylaw and we started meeting in earnest. meeting in earnest in December of last year. The problem that we're trying to address is the one that's been in the news a lot more recently, but it certainly has been growing over the last couple of years, and that's cyber threats, particularly ransomware. For those who aren't familiar with ransomware, it's when a piece of software or what we call malware exploits a whole security bug in your operating system and encrypts your files and will sell you the decryption key in order to be able to get access to those files. And some of them, if you don't pay, end up, you know, exposing the information for sale. And we're really concerned about this problem because, over the last three months, you can, there have been some very high-profile attacks that have affected people's lives. And the reason that we're concerned is that municipalities are often considered soft targets for criminals, and that typically means that they're easy prey. What we're trying to do is to help Burlington avoid a cyber attack while also preparing the town how to respond and recover from one if one should occur. I won't go into much details about these particular incidents, but as you know, over the last couple of weeks, the inspection system for Massachusetts Autos has been offline, and that was due to another ransomware attack. Right before the Super Bowl, the water treatment employees at a Florida water plant noticed that the sodium hydroxide level started to increase to unsafe levels about two days before the Super Bowl was about to happen. And even right now, as we speak, there has been a ransomware attack on the company that operates an oil pipeline which supplies most of the Northeast with its oil. And so that hit on Friday, and as we get, you know, further out from that date, we'll start, we'll potentially start to see shortages and impacts as a result of that. And finally, two examples of municipalities locally being hit. The city of Lawrence was hit with a ransomware attack in April, and then schools are also becoming a target of ransomware attacks as well. So we have concerns at all levels. Next slide, please. So how did we get started? In the, at the early beginning, we looked out to resources that were available, both at the state and federal levels. We met with some cybersecurity analysts from the state that Amy Warfield is in contact with on a regular basis for election security. Also, Joe Corjano presented us with a program from the federal government for protecting municipalities as well. With that background, we took that information and we started to craft a cybersecurity policy that we plan to present to the town for adoption. And we've sent drafts to the town administrator and Nick Priest, who's the ISAC Select Board Representative, for their early feedback. Next slide, please. So the important themes in this proposed cybersecurity proposal is that all town employees are stakeholders. That includes administration, department head, employees, vendors, et cetera. Everyone plays a critical role in protecting the town's assets against threats. The time to take action is now. There's things that we can do ahead of time to help Burlington prevent an attack from happening or recover from the attack. And this advanced planning is essential to mitigating an attack and quickly returning to normal operation. We also talk about, in the proposal, different roles that people will play during the planning stage and in the event that we are attacked, how the roles in the successful recovery. And the important thing is that the attack readiness needs to be rehearsed, much like the police and fire department practice with drills to improve their response to any incident that happens to come in their areas. We think that being ready also requires us to clearly rehearse how we attack from how we respond to an attack and recover and return to normal operations. Next slide, please. So our next steps, I'm sorry. Okay. Our next steps is to present the proposed cybersecurity policy to the Select Board and other supervisory bodies for their feedback and adoption. Once approved, we will, the ISAC Committee will monitor the town's implementation of the policy. And the important thing to note is that this policy is a living document. While the initial policy will be approved, you will periodically need to have updates as the landscape changes over time. Attacks evolve as responses get better, and so it's important that we stay on top of these things. And finally, next slide. I'd just like to thank all the residents of the, sorry, all the members of the committee from the residents to the town side, and also the contributors who came, who weren't part of the committee but provided valuable guidance as well. I appreciate that. And that's it.
Thank you, Steve. Lot of information there. Thank you. That concludes Article One. Article Two has been withdrawn, which brings us to Article Three, the operating budget. As has been our practice, I will go through each lot, each department, reading its total budget in the Ways and Means vote. Should you wish to discuss that budget further, you'll have to hold it. So unmute yourself and say, hold. If you miss your chance, don't worry. When we get through the final list, if there's anything I missed or didn't hear, hold. Okay, it has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money, $152,291,800, sufficient to cover the requests of the various departments for FY 2022. Those break down into Item 113, Town Meetings, Meeting and Reports, total of $15,908. Ways and Means vote, 14-0. Other Legislative Committees, total of $8,017. Ways and Means vote, 14-0. 122, Selectman/Town Administrator, total budget, $688,011. Ways and Means vote, 14-0. Town Accountant, $434,0132. Ways and Means vote, 14-0. Assessor, and this one is being held already, but it's budget of $416,779. Ways and Means voted 11-0. Favor. Ways and Means vote, 15-0. Central Administration, this also is being held, grand total of $18,593,992. Ways and Means vote, 15-0. Human Resources, grand total of $160,787. Ways and Means vote, 14-0. It's legal.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
You skipped legal.
Not on this list in front of me, sorry. All right, legal. Grand total, $202,000. Ways and Means vote, 14-0. All right, did I get the Human Resources? Town Clerk, $410,413. Ways and Means voted, 14-0. Management and Information, $667,455. Ways and Means vote, 12-0. Board of Registars, $12,050. Ways and Means vote, 14-0. Conservation, grand total, $273,633. Ways and Means vote, 14-0. Planning, total, $369,637. Ways and Means vote, 12-0. Board of Appeals, $13,731. Ways and Means vote, 12-0. Town Facilities, total, $95,943. Ways and Means vote, 14-0. Police, grand total, $9,637,026. Ways and Means vote, 14-0. Ways and Means vote, 14-0. This is the total here. Yep. Building, $767,037. Ways and Means voted, 15-0. Emergency Management, $23,600. Ways and Means voted, 12-0. Dealer of Weights and Measures, $7,800. Ways and Means voted, 14-0. Did I do emergency management? All right. Local Education, this one is being held, $69,475,677. Regional Schools Assessments, $2833,83. Public Works, grand total, $12,592,647. Ways and Means vote, 14-0.
Please.
Shall I hold?
Yes, please.
Okay, Board of Health, $766,298. Ways and Means vote, 13-0. Council on Aging, grand total, $417,996. Ways and Means vote, 15-0. Veteran Services, $256,698. Ways and Means voted, 15-0. Okay, Youth and Family Services, my mistake, $479,025. Ways and Means voted, 12-0. Disability Access, $934. Ways and Means voted, 14-0. Library, this one is being held, $1648,922. Ways and Means voted, 11-0. Historical Commission, $9,625. Ways and Means voted, 14-0. Debt Service, grand total, $12,942,449. All right, we're gonna break debt service down into its pieces. Debt Service Principal, $4,386,593. Reserve Fund, $200,000. Little Sex Retirement, this is being held, $11,757,449. Negotiated Settlements, $535,000 being held. Stabilization is at zero. Local Transportation, $50,000. Capital Budget, $400,000. So I will need a motion to to vote on what has not been held, and its total is Do I have a a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Amy will be giving us a poll. If the the music rooms can can count their votes, please. Do you want to see this as move? Oh, I see. But dancer. Hold on, we have a question on the number. Okay. Um. I'm gonna need a new motion. We have a have a slightly different number. I'll need a motion for $37,276,444.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Moderator? Yes.
Do we actually need a motion to withdraw the first one before we can vote another one?
Well, let's just call this an amendment.
Okay.
Okay, here's our poll with the corrected number.
A point of information, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Uh, this is Gary Caskey, Precinct 6. Are we voting on everything that was held?
No, we're voting on everything that was not held.
Oh, okay, all right.
Mr. Moderator, can you open the poll back up again?
Yeah, half the people couldn't get that.
It didn't, it, yeah, it didn't go through.
Same for me.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
A point of information, are we to get your attention through raising our hand in the participant window or by unmuting ourselves?
Preferably by raising your hand.
Okay, a follow-up question.
Then by unmuting yourself.
Okay, so, thank you. A follow-up point of information or point of order, I'm not sure. At the beginning of the budget, you're calling out the articles. You indicated that you would allow for time at the end to review anyone that missed calling a hold. And I would appreciate if we would understand which articles are being held as part of the $37 million. Can we get a list?
Articles being held. Assessor. Central Administration. Local Education. Building. Add to that, Library. Little Sex Retirement. Negotiated Settlements. Okay, here comes a new poll. Okay, Music Rooms. Breakout Rooms, can I get your votes, please?
Mr. Moderator? Six in favor, none opposed.
And the other room, please?
In theory, we're five in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. There being 87 in favor, four opposed, and one abstention. Those operating budgets are passed. Let's go back to the ones that were held. Thought you had a question? Got a Ryan?
It's a it's it's mute now. That's what was taken. I think that we missed the opportunity to be able to ask for holds after you read the list. Thank you.
Okay, the first held budget was the assessor. Is there a question for on it?
Mr. Moderator, this is Sherri Ellis. I request the hold, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I had a question regarding this budget. Um, I haven't received an answer yet, so I'll go ahead and ask the question. My understanding is that the assessor sometime in the summer or fall of 2020 has retired. Um, and he is now contracted with the town for a specific contract of $80,000 a year. And um, his salary was prior to that, $120,000. Um, I don't see the decrease in the line item for the salary or the increase in the contracted services. Um, and so I wanted an explanation from hopefully someone from the Board of Assessors. Um, and if indeed the assessor is taking his pension and on top of the contracted services. So I'd appreciate some explanation on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Do we have anyone from the Board of Assessors? If not, Mr. Sagarino or Mr. D'Nozzi?
Mr. Dougherty is here as the representative, as usual, from the Board of Assessors.
Okay, Mr. Dougherty, go ahead, please.
Um, I think as Mr. Moderator knows and the Town Clerk is aware, we received this request last Friday. It was initially directed to someone else. We responded to it today, shortly before 2 o'clock. It was um, sent to Amy Warfield and Sherri Ellis. The request to Amy was to provide it to all town meeting members.
Could you give us the answer then, please, Jim?
I'd be more than happy to, but there are a lot of questions here, sir. So um, I can, the reason I reference it, I guess, well, is I would suggest that if you go to the last page of the assessors budget, you can see essentially the request we made. And then there was a revision to the request. Not by the Board of Assessors, but through the typical administration slash ways and means process. I think the essence, if I could try to summarize, is that um, the contracted services amount relating to my work seems to be the focus of the question, was put in contracted services and deducted the entire amount from the FY, my FY '21 salary. And at a revised version, as I mentioned, simply was that the $80,000 was taken out of contract services and it was put into full-time salary category. And my understanding is the whole thought process behind that, Frank Monaco may want to speak to it as well. Um, essentially, the concern was that it would substantially decrease that category for that position before it was going to be funded at some time in the future, maybe differently. And so um, I'm not quite sure beyond that what the question is. Um, so that's why I wrote up a lengthy response to all the questions that were posed, but I'm more than willing to answer anything verbally, telephonically tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Dougherty. Ms. Ellis.
Um, follow-up if I could?
Go ahead.
Um, I did not receive any of the response for that, so that's why I'm asking the question now. Um, and I apologize if I didn't get it, but I don't have an email for it, and I didn't check the website. So um, I I guess that's a confusing statement to me that a contract is then put back into full-time. I think I understand the philosophy that that is to keep a salary line item for going forward. Um, I don't know if anyone from the board is here, it doesn't sound like it. Um, is there a plan going forward to hire a new assessor in the future? Um, and I guess I still would like an answer to the question, is the current assessor who's contracted taking a pension? Thank you.
Mr. Dougherty, do you know the answer to that question? You're muted, Mr. Dougherty.
I apologize. Um, as as I think most of the town meeting members and town officials are aware, I have historically, for the past 11 years, attended these meetings, various points, as usual, the Board of Assessors or members thereof do attend. Unfortunately, we were unaware till Friday afternoon of this request and hold, therefore, they had prior commitments. And as usual, as a compensated person, I I'm their representative and they they came. I'm sure they would be more than happy at any point in time to um, uh, speak directly with Ms. Ellis or anyone else that has any questions on this. Um, the short answer is, and again, I would strongly encourage everyone even after this, because I don't want to drag the meeting on any longer, um, to find this document, read the document for yourself. And I think you you will realize the Board of Assessors, as well as the Town Administrator, had long discussions about this. So the short answer is, I'm sure they intend to hire someone full-time at some point in time. I think I'm equally assured that I think, um, equally assured that the Board of Assessors and the assessing department is, has, um, and will continue to provide the level of services they, they have. Um, and the public in the town can be assured there's firm stability in a time of crisis and, and pandemic, um, that I think is really, uh, testimony to their service and their concern for their community. I hope that answers the question.
Ms. Ellis?
No, it didn't, but I guess we can move on because we're not going to get an answer. But if you can provide that to, um, Amy so she can put that out to town meeting, your answers to the questions, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
I have, again, provided it, and I provided it to your email address, which you've contacted me before, Ron, at minuteman senior dot org, uh, S. Ellis prior to that. And I apologize if I didn't answer your question, so maybe if, um, you give it to me one time, I, I can give you a very succinct one. I don't want you to go, just go away disappointed.
Okay, thank you.
We have, we have nothing to hide. Your, your, um, request in tone indicated there was something nefarious, and that's why I want to answer your question, and that's why I'm encouraging everyone to go view these documents, because, um, uh, there is nothing nefarious about what's taken place at all.
Mr. Moderator?
Thank you, Mr. Dougherty. Ms. Ellis, anything further?
Um, I just will correct it, that is not my correct email address, I retired from that work. Um, but thank you.
Mr. Moderator? Joanne Prustatch here. I don't see the hand raising, so I'm sorry to just speak out. I, I think I heard the question to be, is the assessor taking a pension and a salary? And I appreciate, Mr. Dougherty, your willingness to answer that, so I think that was the question.
Sure. Um, I am taking a salary for the work I'm performing, as alluded to earlier and referenced in, uh, my response. Uh, the Board of Assessors, um, with the full support of the administration, um, negotiated with me. We, um, finalized a two-year engagement that goes from September of two thousand twenty until September of two thousand twenty-two. Just so everybody understands, particularly those consultants or people that have hired consultants, the way we arrived at the funding for that was essentially to take the salary of the position divided by five, being five days. That worked out to about twenty-four thousand dollars. We then multiplied that by three for the three days a week that I attend, um, the office to conduct business. That comes to seventy-two thousand dollars. We then agreed at my suggestion that to eliminate any need for lack of communication, which I have a town phone, um, with email attached, that provides access to the assessors and certain officials, um, to contact me at, well, for the other two days, but lets anybody in business understand it's twenty-four-seven, arguably. Um, so that's how it was arrived at. There was no, um, um, consultant premium, um, if I shall. Regarding my pension, I responded in here and I will read it, it's a one-sentence thing. Let, um... Well, essentially, I'll summarize. Okay, regarding any pension, which is a public record, I wrote in this document, "I find it irrelevant to the budget question. I will politely leave it at that." But it's a public record, so anybody can research it if they'd like to, and it won't be hard. But I just personally am insulted by the question because I know the background in terms of where this whole thing is coming from, and I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Moderator? I don't have a raised having function, it's Betsy Hughes, Precinct Seven, may I ask the question?
All right, ahead.
Or make a comment on... This has really nothing to, I mean, Mr. Dougherty, um, has answered the question and obviously has taken offense at some of this, but I think as a matter of policy, I'd like to encourage the, uh, Town Administrator and the Board to think about, um, yeah, I understand there's a need for transition when we have valued employees who retire after long periods of time. However, I think a two-year contract is beyond the bounds of a transition. We should be, I believe, looking to replace that role, which is a valuable role for the town. I can understand that there should be some transition, but to have someone stay on as go from an employee to a contractor under contract for two years, to me seems a little, um, I don't know that that's the way we want to continue business. I just think if we should maybe think about, I know there's a policy, is kind of take a look at that policy going forward, um, so that we don't have people collecting money from the town through our pension and also collecting a salary at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Cormier, do you have a question?
Uh, just a general, uh, comment, if I could, quickly. Um, I understand that Mr. Dougherty is offended, um, nature as a taxpayer. I suppose I'm equally as offended. Um, it's our tax money, I've been, I've been on this, uh, town meeting for well over twenty years now, served on Ways and Means for five. Um, that's not an acceptable answer. I would urge people to vote against this, uh, this line, let it, let it ride for, for the same as it did, um, in last year's budget amount.
Any further questions on this? Mr. Cormier, please lay over your hand. Seeing none? We'll pull to a vote. Amy, if you could send out a poll. Four sixteen, seven seven nine. We'll vote each of the held budgets individually. We're voting on the motion, we're voting on the, on the, that budget. Music Room, do I have a vote?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, three in favor and three opposed.
Thank you, Theory Room. David? Mr. Wadilla, do you have a vote for me? Theory Room, do we have a vote from you, please? Or have I lost you?
All right, in theory, one in favor, four opposed.
There being fifty in favor, forty-seven opposed, and four abstentions. That budget passes. The next-held budget, on one forty-nine, Central Administration. Who had the question on it?
I'm sorry, Bill, that was Central?
Mr. Moderator? Bruce Mori, precinct one, question on line item number sixteen. Health insurance line, uh, five-point-seven percent increase year-over-year. Um, apologies to Paul and, uh, Gary, I didn't have a chance to, uh, follow up with them directly. Just need some explanation as to why we're seeing that big of an increase. Obviously, with COVID, we're expecting to see some, probably some really, um, decrease, or some large decrease in healthcare expenses, so wondering why that number's going up so much.
Mr. Giannino, can you handle that question? Considering COVID issues, the question was why that health insurance went up as much as it did? Was it fifteen? Bruce, which one was you questioning? Fifteen or sixteen?
Line, line sixteen.
Sixteen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. If I understand correctly, you're asking what the, uh, town meeting member wondered, or why insurance went up? Is that correct?
One-seven percent, wondering why that's going up so high.
Well, we, uh, we operate on a self-funding.
Yep.
Although our claims, uh, changed during the course of the year, uh, we estimated a two-to-three percent increase for those policies, given the claims. So it was a modest increase. We have, uh, a few more people on the plan, and those, those basically are two changes.
Uh, follow-up question, Mr. Moderator? Follow-up, Mr. Moderator?
Go ahead, Bruce.
Oh, sorry, Gary, just a, uh, just a, uh, just a question. Um, my understanding and certainly by what I saw being in the industry, um, there was a significant decrease in services cost utilization due to COVID. I'm wondering why we're still seeing, you, I think you indicated it was a two-or-three percent increase year-over-year. I would have, would have expected a, a large decrease in actual expenditures, due to COVID. So one, I'm, I'm just, I'm confused why that number is going up year-over-year, um, over almost six percent.
The, uh... Thank you, Bruce. The, uh, everyday claims have, in fact, decreased over the course of the year. Wearing the masks have reduced some of the, uh, respiratory claims. We have had a, uh, enormous increase in some of our large claims. Uh, those continue, I just looked at a report today, and even though we, uh, have stop-loss insurance, we had raised that two years ago from a hundred thousand to a hundred and a quarter. So our costs, uh, did, did increase. That's really it, it was really a modest increase. We didn't think we're pushing anything, anything to the limit. The, uh, employees pay thirty percent of that cost, and, uh, the town pays seventy percent.
Mr. Moderator, may I add to that? This is Mr. Genesio.
Thank you, Mr. Giannino. Anything further, Mr. Mori?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Cormier, do you have a question?
Not this time, Mr. Moderator, thanks, Gary. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. A quick question, if I could. I know a lot of this kind of rolls into, uh, from years past and discussion on this with Paul and myself, um, when we started the whole OPEB, um, um, issue moving forward. A couple of questions, if I may, if someone could possibly tell me the breakdown currently. I know we have active and retiree, um, class on this. Do we have a, uh, I, if, I'm not mistaken, I thought it was a fifty-fifty split, roughly. Uh, has that changed, um, recently? Is there any type of head count that can be given?
The, uh, active, uh, employer, you're, you're right, John, it's pretty close. There's probably about, uh, fifteen to twenty more active employees versus retirees at this point.
Thank you, also, a second, a follow-up?
Fifty, uh, active, uh, employees and about seven-thirty on the retirees.
A follow-up, if I may, Mr. Moderator? Um, the, the, uh, the other issue to that, uh, Gary was, I, I know there's, there was talk and trying to, obviously, always trying to kind of pull, pull in line, um, additional costs associated with this. And, uh, as I said, uh, previous, it kind of rolls into the whole OPEB issue, uh, moving forward. What exactly, I know we have a thirty-seventy split on the, on the current, what, what is the retirees? Is that, is that also seventy-thirty?
There is a, uh, legacy plan for the retirees, there were ninety percent. Uh, there's a few on eighty-five. Uh, we have some at eighty, and newer employees that are coming in, I don't remember the year, I think it might be, uh, sixteen or seventeen, but I could be wrong with that, John, or at the seventy-thirty. So we're starting to move over a, a bit more into the, away from the nineties into the, uh, eighty and the seventy.
Is it possible at some point in time, Gary, to kind of get a better breakdown of, of those numbers for me?
You want a better breakdown?
At, at some point in time, as I said, I know this, this has been an issue with me for, for years with, uh, with the OPEB and how to, how to best, um, move forward in trying to get some of these costs under control. I know the OPEB line is, is pretty significant, as we'll see later, but, uh, um, we've been, we've been kind of running around in circles with this.
The change, uh, that was made was to bring it in line with the, uh, the current employees. So there is that, that movement to change. We're seeing some increase in our reimbursements from the retirees over year-to-year. It may be slight, but I think that's going to start to gain a momentum.
Okay, I'll, I'll touch base with you later on then. Thank you.
I have someone named Mark who has a question.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Moderator, it's Mark Woods, Precinct Seven. Uh, Gary, uh, regarding health insurance, has the town approached the state GIC?
Mark, where you are?
Hello? Can you hear me?
I have no last name.
Oh, last name is Woods. Uh, town meeting member.
Do you have a question?
Yes, um, I'm in Precinct Seven. Uh, I wanted to ask, uh, Gary if the town is... You can't hear me? I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you clearly.
Can hear you fine.
Okay. Uh, I wanted to ask, uh, Gary, if the town of Burlington has approached the... Okay, I wanted to ask Gary if the town of Burlington has approached the state GIC to get a quote for health insurance, to see how that would compare based on what we're paying on our own?
Could you repeat that please, Mark, we have some problems here, hearing you.
Okay, I wanted to ask if the town of Burlington could approach the state to get a quote if we wanted to join the GIC for health insurance, to see what the cost would be versus doing it on our own?
If I may, Mr. Honorable, thank you, I believe the town has looked at that before, we're looking at different programs, I could take a look at that again. We have an insurance advisory committee made up of some of the employees from the different departments. We do have an HSA program that we started two years ago, and that has a higher deductible, has a savings account related to that, and we do see some people moving into that, but I think we're hoping more people join that program as we move ahead, and that should save some dollars also. I'd like to take a look at that.
Alright, thank you.
Any further questions? On the Central Administration budget? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. Amy, could you cut a poll out for me? Okay.
Alright Bill, in the music theory room, we are five in favor, zero opposed. That's the music theory room.
Mr. Moderator, the chorus rooms, six in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Five-zero. There being ninety-five in favor or against, that budget passes? I have the building department marked down as being held. Someone have a question on that budget?
Hi, Bill, if I could. I was wondering if I could possibly get a better answer to, or maybe a better explanation as to the jump in overtime, I know in past years, being on Ways and Means, that there's a delicate balance as to how much overtime we wind up seeing increasing, and when that becomes prohibitive as far as getting potential part timer, if in fact there's an awful lot of work, if that happens to be the case, but I'd like a little bit better explanation for it, please.
Mr. Denizio or Mr. Sagrino, please, a question, an answer for that?
Mr. Moderator, I missed the department, which department was Mr. Cornea referring to?
Building.
Thank you, I can address that. So for the fiscal twenty-two budget, we actually reduced by one inspector. So we went from four local building inspectors down to three. So, and to acknowledge the fact that we're unsure how quickly the building activity will resume, we put a few extra dollars in the salary line item, so that our new commissioner would have the opportunity to either, if the workload increased, the new commissioner would have the opportunity to hire some assistance if necessary. So we cut a local building inspector position reflected in this budget from four to three, and we supplemented that by adding a few extra dollars into the overtime light item to be available to the commissioner, if, again, if we pick up like we hope to sooner than we anticipate.
Can I answer your question, Mr. Cornea?
Yeah, the best visibility, I guess, thank you.
Ms. Ellis, I see you have your hand raised.
Thank you, a follow-up question, Sherry Ellis, Precinct Three. Follow-up to that, for next year's budget then, will the inspector be put back into the budget and the overtime reduced?
Mr. Moderator, thank you. Sherry, we are going to have to sort of monitor the building activity, and I think that that's what's going to drive our decision to reinstate that position, so hopefully as things turn around, we'll have a better idea of what our needs will be for that department. But if so, we are prepared to come back and work with the Ways and Means to reinstate the fourth inspector position and then reduce that overtime amount.
Thank you.
Anything further on this?
If I may, Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Cornea, yes, go ahead.
Quick one, well, I know in the past, and I'm not sure when the last time we've spoken about it, and having not someone from the department representing right now, but there's always been an issue as a subcommittee on this, when I was on Ways and Means, that was the updating the fee structure for the buildings and getting it potentially in line to recoup some costs with the amount of building that had occurred. I can't recall off the top of my head as far as when that, or if that has been updated, and if not, are there plans on possibly making that happen soon?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, John, the department still takes in an extraordinary amount of permit revenue, certainly enough to fund its own entire budget, even on a bad year, but we can certainly look at the fee structure, just to make sure that it is competitive with our neighboring communities, I think as a community, we don't like to be the highest, we don't like to be the lowest, we like to be somewhere in the middle of the pack, but we can ask our new commissioner to look into the fee structure and make any recommendations for changes if he sees anything that isn't falling in line where we should be.
Thank you, Mr. Sagrino, anything further from anyone? Seeing none, let's vote on this building department budget of seven hundred sixty thousand thirty-seven dollars. All's out.
Hey Bill, music theory room is going to come in at five, four, and zero against.
Thank you.
The moderator, the chorus room is also five, four, zero against.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any trouble voting, because I can't click on a button?
Amy, you have a vote for me? There being ninety-six in favor, three against. That budget has passed. Let's move on to local education.
Mr. Moderator, Gary Caskey, I have my hand up.
Go ahead, Mr. Caskey.
Gary Caskey, Precinct Six. I'd like to know if there's someone from the school committee that can give us an update and more detail on the inspector general's investigation of Superintendent Conti.
Mr. Caskey, I'm going to rule that question out of order, it has nothing to do with our budget discussion today. Are there other questions?
Well, I believe it does.
Your moderator has ruled.
That's the president. I think, I think, I think people here on Town Meeting have a right to know, some people don't know about the situation, and I think somebody from the school committee should
There are things that people in Town Meeting might like to know, but Town Meeting is not necessarily the place or the time to get them, and that is one of them. We're discussing the school department budget, and the questions will be limited to things that have to do with next year's budget, it's just how this goes. Are there any further questions? I'm not seeing
I don't have any questions right now.
Anybody else have any questions? Seeing none, we'll put this to a vote. All those in favor of the local education budget of sixty-nine million four hundred seventy thousand five hundred sixty-seven dollars. Got a poll coming out.
Hi, Mr. Moderator, this is music theory room, we are four in favor, one opposed.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, the chorus room is five, four, zero against.
Thank you. There being seventy-nine in favor, sixteen opposed, and one abstention, that budget has passed. Next budget I have held is the library. Have a question on that. Public Works, did I skip over it? Alright, Public Works. Who had a question on Public Works?
I have one, Mr. Moderator, if I could.
Who's that?
I have a question if I could, please.
Who, who are you?
I'm sorry, John Cornea, Precinct Six.
Thank you, Mr. Cornea, go ahead.
I was just wondering if someone could possibly maybe elaborate a little bit on the trash and removal. I've gotten numerous, numerous complaints within my precinct regards to some of the yard waste removal, and they're not too happy, so I'm more inclined not to support this. Can't get some more clarification, it's been an ongoing issue, week after week, to make a phone call to DBW and get have it sitting out there for a week or so. Thank you.
Mr. Sanchez? Can you answer that question for us?
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, Mr. Cornea is absolutely correct, we've been working with the contractor for, it seems like every season now, we're going on the second since the fall. When the season starts, and always the spring just starts, they're normally very heavy, and it takes them a while to catch up, and we're definitely a couple of days behind, as we have been since we started a couple of weeks ago, he's absolutely correct, and we've been talking to the contractor daily on this. We do have a very good contract right now, I can say that, however, we do have this particular issue going on with the seasonal pickup, and that's all I can say about it, we are on it, but he is correct, we are behind a couple of days.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
If I may, Mr. Moderator, just a quick follow-up comment, I don't think people would mind nearly as much when they're told it's going to be picked up and it just sits out there for well over a week, that's what really kind of grates on people. They can adhere and abide by a set schedule, but year after year, when that schedule isn't met, it is rather annoying. Thank you.
Further questions on this budget? Seeing none, we'll put this to a vote, Public Works budget of twelve million five hundred ninety-two thousand six hundred forty-seven dollars.
Mr. Moderator, the chorus room, six, four, zero against.
Mr. Moderator, this is music theory room, we are five in favor, zero against.
And me.
Okay, we have library up. Who had a question on it?
Sorry, Mr. Moderator, I didn't get the both of that last budget. Do you have one?
Oh, I'm having problems with my mute button.
Okay, thank you.
Here we go. Eighty-eight in favor, three opposed, one abstention. Now we'll move on to the library. Did someone have a question on it? I guess not. So we'll vote on the library. Mr. Moderator, the chorus room, six, four, zero against for the library budget. Thank you.
Moderator, Music Theory Room is five in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. It would be eighty-six in favor and seven opposed. What's that budget carries? Next item I have is Middlesex Retirement. Who had a question?
Mr. Moderator, I don't know who may have held it or had a question, but if I could. John Cormier, Precinct Six. Just a quick question on that, if I may. The, what's the current head count on on that retirement, if someone might happen to have a number?
Mr. Giannino, do you have a number?
The for Burlington. Retired participants at the valuation date of December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen was five hundred and sixty-four. Inactive participants entitled to return, one hundred and seven. Retired participants as of the valuation date, including thirty-one beneficiaries, is three hundred and seventy-three. So if I added that all up, it looks like to be nine hundred and thirty, forty thousand people. I didn't count the inactive.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Boyven?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Bill Boyven, Precinct One. I'm just noticing it's up ten percent, that item, since last year. And it was up about ten percent the year before. Is this a trend we expect to see going forward? Or do we expect to see it level off at some point?
Mr. Giannino?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Middlesex County is trying to catch up on their funding of the unfunded liability. They have a program going through two thousand thirty-seven. I would think you'll see some increases as the participants increase, but I do not know by what amount. Sorry about that.
Anything further?
A question from the... Mr. Moderator, a question?
Who's that?
Yeah, Bruce Maury, Precinct One. Gary, quick question again on the Middlesex Retirement. Ten percent increase year over year. Does that mean we're seeing a pretty large increase in actual retirees? Or is this what you just referenced, a catch-up and/or some kind of additional funding due to the shortfall in the Middlesex Retirement Fund itself?
It is similar to, it's the unfunded liability, the actuarial results each year. For two years, they give the estimated payment. So fiscal year twenty-three, we know is going to be, right now, it's estimated twelve million, five. I don't know, that's not a ten percent increase, it's a little less.
Thank you.
Follow-up, Mr. Moderator?
Go ahead.
Gary, is it an increase in the actual retirees? Or is there an increase in the actual funding? Or a combination of both?
I believe it's a combination of both, Bruce.
That's another follow-up. If we can get more numbers on the actual representatives that are driving these costs, that would be helpful as part of the backup. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Anything further?
One more follow-up, please, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Cormier, could you raise your hand so I can call on you appropriately?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Just a quick question through you, Mr. Moderator. Gary, I know that some of this stuff has always been a concern, especially over the past few years with the rate of return on the market and everything. As most people have seen a pretty good rate of return on their investments. Could you speak briefly to that and why we're seeing such high increases in this year after year, when most people have seen quite a bump in their retirements?
Mr. Giannino, can you handle that easily enough?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The returns, as you know, fluctuate with the economy. Last year, if we remember, June thirtieth of two thousand twenty, a lot of these funds were down. This year, they've increased back up. These funding estimates are done based on actuarial results. I know right now, we're going through a valuation actuarial. I'm not sure when the Middlesex Counties is, but upon that study, these rates, if they continue to do well, they are invested in the PRIM, which is the state retirement plan, which has shown pretty strong results. Then maybe these numbers would change.
Thank you, Mr. Giannino. Anything further? Seeing none? Let's vote on Middlesex Retirement of eleven million, seven hundred fifty-seven thousand, four hundred forty-nine dollars.
Hi, Mr. Moderator, this is Music Theory Room. We have five in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, in the chorus room, there are five, four, zero against. Thank you. It would be eighty-three in favor, six opposed, four abstentions. That budget passes. Last-held item. Negotiated settlements, five hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. Who had a question on this? Don't be shy. Well, seeing none? We'll vote on this number. Christine Warren, okay, go ahead.
Moderator, Chris Warren, Precinct Four. I didn't have a question, but now that it was held, I actually don't know what it's made up of. Is it the same as the firefighter contract? I'm not sure who to direct it to. Rue, the moderator, please.
Mr. Sagarino?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This budget reflects all of the potential wage adjustments for any of the contracts that we would settle. So what we do is, we appropriate these funds and then we transfer money out of this line and into individual department line items. As well as, this line is also intended to cover buyouts when employees retire and we owe them a bunch of money. And a particular department cannot absorb that hit in a particular year. So two purposes primarily relates to wages. Again, it's all within the same guideline percentage. So, for example, the A and P contract, which is on later on, if Town Meeting votes to approve the wage adjustments for department heads, the money comes out of this budget line. It's not additional money. So it's a transfer within the budget.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Anything further? Seeing nothing? Let's vote on this. Negotiated settlements, five hundred thirty-five thousand dollars.
Moderator, chorus room, six in favor, zero opposed.
Mr. Moderator, Music Theory Room, five in favor, zero opposed.
Okay. Yes, well, we did. But then we went back and went through all of the individual pieces of the debt service. And the Middlesex Retirement and negotiated settlements were the two that had questions on them. Okay? Okay, now let's see if we can wrap the ball around this whole operating budget. Vote on the whole thing as one number.
Mr. Moderator? Line line number seven-ten, debt service, does not include anything to do with Middlesex Retirement or negotiated settlements. Debt services, we broke out as a principal value and an interest value. Your total number, you originally started out with twelve million dollars. And then you broke it out, and it was four million, what the numbers were in the book. This is Scott Martin, Precinct Seven.
Yeah.
Thank you. Department number seven-ten, line eighty-five and eighty-six. I may be in error.
Okay, Mr. Martin?
Yes, sir.
I originally read a number of twelve million dollars, which was a combination of principal and interest and some other numbers in there, and other accounts. And we then went back. And instead of holding all of them, we went back each of the line items for that. I read off the amount for the principal, I read off the amount for the interest, and I went through the other ones, reserve fund, Middlesex Retirement, et cetera. And we went through all of those. And we went through all of those individually.
Thank you very much, Ms. Moderator. I see now, I now see what you did. Thank you.
Okay, are we good?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, let's see if we can put a, a big, big ball around the whole operating budget. So it's been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee for the town to raise, to, to vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or otherwise provide a sum of money of $152,291,800, sufficient to cover the requests of the various departments, FY 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Amy, can we have a poll?
Mr. Moderator, the chorus room is six-four, zero opposed.
Mr. Moderator, Music Theory Room, we are five in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. There being eighty-two in favor, three opposed and one abstention. The operating budget for the Town of Burlington for FY 2022 has been passed. Thank you. Article four. Moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee. To vote to transfer $675,000 from free cash to place in the town's OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust Fund. Warren, Ways and Means vote on this.
One second. Article four, sorry, the OPEB Fund, which is Article five, fourteen-zero-zero. You're trying to, you're trying to catch whether I'm still paying attention or not, thanks.
Exactly, I hope I didn't wake you up.
Not this time, but as evening gets later, maybe.
Fair enough. Okay, are there any questions on this?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Monty Pearson, Precinct Three. And the question I have is why this particular amount of money being transferred and how much money is currently in the reserve fund?
Mr. Giannino. You?
Oh, thank you. This $675,000 represents the remaining original appropriation for fiscal year 21. In September last year, we reduced the appropriation of $779,957. We reduced about the $675,000. This request is to, to bring back the twenty-one, fiscal year 21 contribution back to the original schedule.
And how much money is in the reserve fund at this moment?
Fund at this point, as of March 31st, 2021, had $11,676,445.
Thank you, Mr. Giannino. Further questions? Mr. Eiler.
All right, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just want to make sure everyone's clear what we're talking about here. Article four was withdrawn, so this is not a transfer to the stabilization fund. We're talking about Article Five, which is a transfer to the OPEB Fund. And as Mr. Giannino, Giannino mentioned, this is essentially catch-up for the fact that we did not put in the full amount last year. So this is the amount that normally would have gone in last year, but is being done this year as a catch-up.
Thank you. Okay, let's make a correction here. Article four was withdrawn. So Article Five is what, really what we were talking about. Moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee. The town, town vote to transfer a sum of money from free cash to place in the town's OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust Fund. Same amount of money, going to the same amount, same place. Different, different article. Anything further? Mr. Pearson, your hand is still up. You have another question. Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Moderator.
Well, who is that?
Please raise your hand. Gary Caskin.
Hit your button to raise your hand.
I have it on, I have it on.
It's not showing up, Gary.
Well, it's showing up here. Anyway, my question is, what is the amount, the total amount that you, we're talking?
We're talking $675,000.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Anything further? Seeing nothing? Put it to a vote. Amy, send a poll out. Poll is out.
Mr. Moderator, this is the Music Theory Room. We are five in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, on the chorus room, we are six in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. There being eighty-four in favor, six opposed and one abstention. Motion is passed. Article six. To fund revolving accounts.
Hold. It's funny. Hold. That would be one. And then the school revolving accounts.
Okay. Ways and Means voted these as a group, thirteen in favor, one opposed. I understand there's a question on the B-line. We take the questions and we'll go back and vote on them. The Sickler.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Eileen Sickler, Precinct Four. On the sale of the recyclables, the balance at 33121 was $425,000 and was about 375 a year ago. So based on the description of, of what's allowed, and I understand that you're limited to what you can charge off on these accounts. But it seems to me that we'd be able to offset more than $12,000 in expenses for the last nine months. I'd asked this question to Mr. D'Nizio and I thought we were going to hear from John Sanchez on that. So why isn't there more money being able, why isn't there more money being charged to that account? That's the question.
Mr. D'Nizio.
Or Mr. Moderator, thank you, John D'Nizio. I'm not sure if Mr. Sanchez is on too, but I did, I was able to speak to Mr. Sanchez later this afternoon and he reminded me of something he's already told me, which was that the plan was to try to build up the balance on that account so that we could purchase all of the replacement toters, because it's quite a big number when we do purchase all the replacement toters and additional toters. So having the money in the account allows us to do that. And then as we sell them and build that money back up, we can do it again at some point. But that was the reason to try to build that account to what seems like a high number, but there really is a target number for building it up to do that.
And if I may have a follow-up, so when is that expected?
It's over the next year or two.
Okay, all right. And then if I may, Mr. Moderator, another quick question on the cemetery balance. That's gone from 377 to 468 as of March 30th. And I, again, I understand we're limited to what can be charged here, but there was zero charged in the first nine months of this fiscal year. So again, if someone could tell me, explain why we haven't been able to charge anything to that account.
Well, that's not part of this article, but Mr. D'Nizio, can you answer that?
Thank you, thank you.
I don't know if Mr. Sanchez is on or if...
Yep, I'm on. Thanks, John. So if you don't mind, Mr. Moderator. John Sanchez.
Go ahead, John.
So that account, if I'm not mistaken, is the sale of lots and graves.
Yes.
And so what we do with that account is every time the graves are sold, the money goes into it. For us to be able to utilize those funds, we actually need a town meeting warrant article. So it's not, that's a little bit different than, I don't think it's in this revolving fund for that reason, because it's actually a separate fund. And what you see us doing in the future, as we've done in the past, we use those funds to actually do expansions of the cemetery. So when we do to expand the cemetery, you'll see us coming up with a town meeting warrant article and the funding source will be the sale of lots and graves.
All right, thank you, John. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, President.
Mr. Sagarino, do you have a question? Are you muted?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I actually had a question about the B-line.
Right ahead.
So I understand that that doesn't refer to actually the B-line, but is a kind of a catch-all term for local transportation. And I was wondering if we could have a report of what's happening on that front. I know we're using Uber and that sort of thing. But I think that is a new, relatively new program and to get a sense of how effective it's being and whether that money is being, you know, if that's the best use for that money.
Well, again, that doesn't really apply to this article. But Mr. Sanchez, can you give a quick answer on that?
Well, the B-line's in this article.
No, B-line revolving account is in this article.
Okay.
Actually, Mr. Moderator, I really can't, that's been managed by all the departments. So I don't know if JD, you have the information or if the old department head is here to answer it.
Mr. Moderator, I can give it a shot to answer that. I don't have the numbers in front of me. But in our recent discussions with Marge McDonald, obviously, the last time we reported out, the program started up right before the pandemic. So there wasn't a lot of time for startup there. And then there was a long period of time where people obviously didn't want to get in a car with somebody. But since right around December, the numbers have started increasing pretty dramatically on the usage for the program. And again, I don't have the figures in front of me, but I think we're almost approaching usage levels to at least what we had with the B-line before. And we can certainly get that information for you and have Amy send it out tomorrow, so you'll have it for Wednesday.
Thank you, Mr. Sagarino.
Thank you, Mr. Sagarino.
Are there any further questions about the revolving accounts? Article six has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee and it is as printed in the warrant.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator. Patricia O'Brien, Precinct Two. I had a question and my hand was up and you mustn't have seen it.
All right, Ms. O'Brien.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just a clarification, so the spending restriction on the local transportation is $50,000 and the balance is $214,000 in that revolving account. If the demand surges to, for us to find ourselves in a situation where there isn't enough money in the account to subsidize those rides, what happens?
Mr. Moderator. We would have to return to town meeting and ask you to raise that limit on the fund. So we're limited by the amount that's in the warrant article. And again, we're also limited by the amount of funds that are in the account. So if there's less than $50,000, say there were $20,000, that's our limit. But we would have to return to town meeting and ask you permission to access more of those funds.
Thank you very much.
Seeing no further hands up. Article six has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee and it is as printed in the warrant. So Amy, if we could get a poll out.
Mr. Moderator, this is Music Theory Room. We have five in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Moderator, the chorus room has six in favor, zero against. Thank you. There being eighty-seven in favor and one against, the motion passes. So let's move on to Article seven. And as we did with the budget, we'll go through each, I will read the amount for each one of these. I will give the selectmen's vote, Ways and Means vote, and capital budget vote, and the amount. If you wish to discuss it, please, we'll have to hold it. So let me know, hold, give me a hold. All right, so. Seven dash one, election equipment for the town clerk. Hold. Fifty thousand dollars. Ways and Means supported at fourteen zero zero, capital budget seven zero. Seven dash two, DPW vehicle replacement. Hold. Three hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars. Selectmen voted five zero in favor, Ways and Means fourteen zero zero in favor. Seven dash three, DPW drainage repair, stream cleaning.
What about capital budget on that last one? We voted seven zero.
Thank you, Mr. Sinessi. I didn't read all the time enough on the line.
Mr. Moderator, this is the Music Theory Room. We have a point of order. We didn't get to the button fast enough. Is seven one held?
Seven one is held.
Okay.
Seven two is held.
All right.
Okay, seven, seven three, again, DPW drainage repairs, stream cleaning, two hundred thousand dollars. Selectmen five zero, Ways and Means vote fourteen zero, capital budget seven zero.
Take all that.
Hold. DPW sewer pump and VFD upgrade, eighty thousand dollars. Selectmen five zero, Ways and Means fourteen zero zero, capital budget seven zero. Seven five. DPW mill pond stop number three, VFD, and control panel box, forty thousand dollars. Selectmen voted five zero in favor, Ways and Means fourteen zero zero, and capital budget seven zero. Seven dash six. DPW cartridge lane pump station, force main design, under the selectmen, one hundred thousand dollars. Selectmen voted five zero, Ways and Means supported at fourteen zero, and capital budget supported at seven zero. Seven dash seven. Library roof. Under the selectmen, three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Selectmen voted five zero, Ways and Means voted eleven, in favor, one opposed, two abstentions, capital budget supported this seven zero. Somebody wanted a hold.
On upstairs, so how many more?
He's just reading through them now.
Seven dash eight. DPW demolition, seven eight is withdrawn. Seven nine withdrawn. Seven ten. The fire department administrative vehicle replacement under the selectmen, thirty-three thousand dollars. Selectmen supported this five zero. Ways and Means voted thirteen in favor, one opposed, zero abstentions, capital budget voted seven zero in favor. Hold. Seven dash eleven. Recreation Wildwood Park sunshade, forty-five thousand dollars.
Hold. Hold.
Let it go. Ways and Means supported this fourteen zero zero, capital budget voted against it, zero seven, and held. Seven dash.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator, was there a selectman vote for that article, for seven eleven?
No, there was not. It's not a selectman article.
Thank you.
Recreation Commission.
Did they vote on it?
It's not a selectman's, I don't know about the Recreation Commission. I don't have their vote.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, seven twelve, recreation overseeder, over cedar, eighteen thousand dollars. Ways and Means voted fourteen zero zero in favor, capital budget voted seven zero in favor.
Hold.
Okay, there's a hold on that. Seven thirteen. Recreation accessible van, fifty-eight thousand dollars. Ways and Means supported at fourteen zero zero, capital budget supported at seven zero.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Roger Bell, Precinct six. I have, I'm sorry, but I had a question on the sunshade, seven dash eleven, the Capitol Committee voted against it. Can we get some further information?
It's been held. We'll come back to discuss it.
It was held?
It was held.
Okay, thank you then.
Seven dash fourteen, under the school committee, BHF, BHS turf field replacement and track resurface. Hold. Seven hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Ways and Means supported at twelve two, capital budget supported at five one one. It's been held. Seven fifteen, school department, Francis Wyman intercom replacement, two hundred seventy-two thousand four hundred dollars. So Ways and Means supported at fourteen zero, capital budget supported at seven zero. Seven dash sixteen, the school department, system-wide sanitary hygiene product dispenser installation, fifty-five thousand dollars. Ways and Means supported at fourteen zero zero, capital budget was three in favor, four opposed.
Hold.
Seven dash seventeen, the school department, insulation and weather stripping, one hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars. Ways and Means supported at fourteen zero zero, capital budget supported at seven zero. Seven eighteen has been withdrawn. Seven nineteen, under the selectmen, town common, nine eleven memorial improvements, twenty-five thousand dollars. Selectmen voted five zero in favor, Ways and Means supported at fourteen zero zero, capital budget supported at six in favor, one opposed. Do we have a number of what we didn't hold? Okay. Nothing. What I have held, seven one, seven two, seven three, seven seven, seven eight, seven nine. They're withdrawn. It wasn't H, that was a W, sorry. Seven eleven. Seven twelve, seven fourteen, seven sixteen. Nope. Mr. Moderator, Roger Riggs. Yes.
I thought I heard a question. I thought I heard a hold on seven ten, the fire administrator vehicle, administration vehicle.
Well, if you're dead, your hearing's better than mine. Does somebody want that held? Yes.
I heard yes, so hold it, please.
Okay, seven ten will be held. Okay. For those that were not held, the total comes to seven hundred sixty-two thousand four hundred dollars. So we will we will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of seven hundred sixty-two thousand four hundred dollars for the items contained below that were not held.
Mr. Moderator, this is Music Theory Room. We have five in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you.
The chorus room, Mr. Moderator, six in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you. There being eighty-three in favor, two opposed, and no abstentions, that motion passes. Now, let's go back to the ones we held. We'll vote these individually. Seven dash one, election equipment for the clerk. What was the question, Mr. Cormier?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, John Cormier, Precinct six. If I may, I know that the backup material spoke of two systems that are being considered. I'd be more apt to vote one way or another, but I'm rather concerned with one of the systems that they have listed here as being certified by the state. Given all the negative publicity over the past god knows how many months, I'd much prefer that there would be one choice or another. And with both of these being up in the air and no distinct decision on either one of them, and I can't support this article.
Thank you, Mr. Cormier. Offield, would you like to address that?
Thank you for that question, John. The machine, I think that you're thinking about as being questionable, is made by a company called Dominion. The recent problems that the Dominion machines had were not the new machines that the state has approved, but the very old machines that we are currently using, the AccuVote machines. So that's one point. The other thing is I did reach out to a number of the clerks in Massachusetts that have the newer machines, that are the Dominion machines. And several of them, five of them, actually had the new machines and took part in the state mandated audit after the November election, and had no errors with ballots not being read or not having accurate counts in the audit. They had zero percent change. The other situation we have is, again, those are the two machines that the state we can pick from. And so the, I, my plan is that we would have both of those vendors come in, demonstrate the machines, you'd get a chance You'd get a chance to, people would get a chance to see how they work and run some tests on them.
Follow-up, if I may, Mr. Moderator. It's not so much, I am somewhat hesitant to make a decision one way or the other if I don't have all of the information provided. So, you know, again, if I'm looking at two and we haven't even gotten to the point of being able to make an informed decision one way or another, I just can't support this.
Thank you, Mr. Cormier. Mr. Boyven, you have a question.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Boyven, Precinct 1. The limited information we got on both of them has one item that I just want to question on the second one, the one that's not Dominion. It mentions that backup data storage is a feature. And I'd like to clarify for this one and for the other one that that does not include an internet connection. But I'm also, and does it include Blu-ray or Wi-Fi as a mechanism of backup some way that goes over the airwaves and could be a vulnerability?
Thank you, Bill, for the question. No, Massachusetts does not allow for the voting equipment to have any internet connection. So the models that we get here in Massachusetts, whether you go with the ImageCast or you go with the D2000, would not have internet capability at all. Those are just modules, features that we don't have.
But even a Blu-ray or Wi-Fi to connect it locally to some other feature, it does not?
Does not have any connection, though. We, there is a feature that you can, if the clerk chooses, they could use a thumb drive, download the data to the thumb drive and then take it to a separate computer off from the election site and upload it to the system if they wanted that company to do the end-of-night closing.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Pearson. After you're muted.
Monty Pearson, Precinct 3. I just wanted to say that I feel comfortable with the town clerk looking through two systems and deciding which one. I think that since they're both recommended by the state, that, and that's the two choices. I don't think it's necessary for town meeting to know the exact details of how a voting machine is operated.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Mr. Waddell, I see you have your hand raised.
I'm in Precinct 5. The fact that this stage was approved does not make me feel warm and fuzzy. Amy, are these the only two?
That you're gonna need to move closer up to the computer. We can't hear you.
Amy, are those two the only two approved by the state?
Yes, those are the only two systems that are currently certified as new machines that we could choose from.
Okay, I mean, I had the same concerns that John Cormier did. And in fact, I contacted Amy, you know, with my concerns. And the fact that the state has approved them does not necessarily make me feel warm and fuzzy about them. Now, some people approached me after the last election and asked if we were using the Dominion machines. And I told them I didn't have the foggiest idea. And I can't help but to think that people are going to be concerned about the integrity of the election and their votes if they think they're voting on a Dominion machine.
Anything further, Mr. Pearson? I see your hand's still up. You have more?
I just think, I would just like to point out that there has been no proof that any Dominion machines had any problems last year. And people who think that Dominion machines were used to manipulate the election are sadly mistaken. And I don't think that that should be a reason for us to pick one machine over another.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Mr. Cormier.
Actually, that's patently unfair, Mr. Pearson. Is for people to have concerns one way or another. The fact that whether you agree or disagree, it is the perception that can be just as damaging. And the first and foremost thing is that we want to ensure that everyone in the town is comfortable that everything that they do when it comes to their vote is secure. And otherwise, you may not agree with that, and that's fine. But to cast people that do have that doubt as not being sincere is totally unreasonable and unwarranted.
Mrs. Byer.
Kathy Byer, Precinct 2.
Speak up, Catherine.
I have a question about will we still be using the same type of paper ballots that we're using now to be read by the machines? So we have the paper backup. And the second part of this is, I do want to point out that we're just allocating the funds to update the machines. This is not the decision about what we're going to go with. But, so, I'd like to confirm the second part and the first part both.
Thank you for the question, Kathy. Yes, we will continue to be a paper, have a paper ballot, which Kathy, I don't know if you know that, that's one of the things that makes the voting in Massachusetts very easy to do audits with because we always have the capability of going back and doing a recount with the paper ballots. If you've been in town for a while, you know that we, at least in my tenure, we have had eight recounts here. And I've participated in recounts in about 16 other communities. And it is always been a very good check because we have the paper to go back to. The second question. Yes, was about the
This isn't a decision.
Oh, yes. This is, yeah, this is just to provide the funds so that I can go out with an RFP. And like I mentioned before, I will be very glad we open up the demonstration process to anyone who is interested to come and see the machines. As well as, I don't know if you know, but before an election, I have to test all of those machines. Every machine has 50 ballots run through it. We run the tapes just like it was an election. We verify that the ballots that we marked are properly read. And then we lock up the machines for the actual election. So there is a lot of checks and balances as we go through the whole process in the election. I agree, though, with John that that's one of the things that I like about our machines and about a paper, having a paper ballot, is that you can do those kinds of tests. You can verify that the machine is working even before you get to election day.
Ms. Warfield. Mr. Cormier, your hand's still up. Do you have something more? Okay, thank you. Seeing no further questions. Put this one to a vote. Amy, if you'll get out a poll. For $50,000. Radical 7-1. Moderator, the Chorus Room, 4 in favor, 0 opposed. That was 4-0? Correct, Mr. Moderator. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, this is Music Theory Room. We had 2 in favor, 3 opposed.
Thank you. There being 80 in favor, 7 opposed. The motion passes. Let's move on. 7-2. DPW vehicle replacement. Mr. Cormier.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, John Cormier, Precinct 6. Question on that, again, I think it boils down to information in order to make an informed decision. I noticed on three of these, it gives a specific description as far as the replacement. But on the third one, for the replacement of the 2004 Mack Wheeler, there is no, other than a other than a replacement. And I was wondering if there was any additional information that could be provided.
Mr. Sanchez.
Mr. Moderator, I am not sure of the question. I will say that the 2004 10-wheeler that we have is in such condition that we'll, we need to replace over the next couple of winters. We give it one more winter, which is what it will take us to get a new one. And then after that, the vehicle is such a condition when it comes to the frame and the rust that it will need to be replaced. So these vehicles are, we're not keeping. You know, they will be actually either auctioned off or traded in or whichever way. We need to dispose of them properly. I don't know if that was the question.
If I may, Mr. Moderator.
Go ahead, Mr. Cormier.
Mr. Sanchez, it's not the, it's not so much the question is replacement because of the rot and everything. It is what that specific 2004 Mack is being replaced with. You know, again, it just boils down to, if I don't know what it's being replaced with, you'd be asked to vote on something that I don't know what we're purchasing.
Mr. Sanchez.
So thank you, Mr. Moderator. In the backup that was submitted, and maybe it's not totally clear the way it's written, that we said 2004 10-wheeler with dump truck. And then we put a dash. And we said what we were replacing it with, which is another 10-wheeler with a plow. So, I mean, a 10-wheeler is expensive. As you know, the other ones have been running about a little bit over 200, and this is 266. So we'd replace it with the same that we have. It's probably not going to be a Mack because we have a standardized fleet with internationals. So it's probably going to be an international vehicle because we try to make Ford the standard for smaller vehicles and international for the larger ones.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Monty Pearson for Precinct 3. I'd just like to ask, all of these have extensive amounts of body rot. Is that because they're used for plowing streets with snow? Or why is everything rotting out so quickly?
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, yeah, all these vehicles are snow and ice vehicles, the three that you have in here. And the larger one, the Mack, it's going to be almost 20 years by the time we actually replace it. The first one that you see, H2, is a Ford Ranger, which is a very small vehicle. This, and yes, it's used to run snow and ice, as well as the H5, which is a one-ton dump truck with a sander, which is the one we use so around Town Hall and the annex and the smaller parking lots. Yeah, and they're all used for snow and ice.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Anything further?
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator.
Who are you?
Mr. Moderator. Hello, Mr. Moderator.
I hear you, whoever you are.
Steve Marchese, Precinct 3.
Go ahead, Mr. Marchese.
Mr. Sanchez, could you tell me, the 10-wheeler Mack, are we going to outfit that truck to be a more efficient snow plowing operation? As you see in many cities and towns, will it come with a wing blade that will potentially eliminate another truck and be more efficient in plowing operations? And will it be outfitted with a brand-new sander with that price of that vehicle?
Mr. Sanchez.
Mr. Moderator, so Steve, the answer to both questions is yes, if it fits in the budget. We've been seeing large increases that are happening right now because of the cost of metal. And obviously, we go out to bid with this. When we put the prices together, we were thinking about exactly what you said, the sander and a wind plow for it. But I mean, I caution, I caution town meeting that prices have been escalating. You probably have seen it all the way around. But originally, when we put the numbers together, we have to do it early on, as you know, before it gets submitted to all the committees. It was with that design in mind, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Go ahead.
I think in my opinion, John, is that, I guess it's probably difficult to hold this until you're able to get the efficient numbers to make the right purchase to benefit us in the long run. Wouldn't that make sense?
Mr. Sanchez.
Meaning, I don't quite understand the question. You mean, like, if we were not
I think in, you know, to make it more beneficial to the taxpayer of the town of Burlington, in my opinion, I guess, I mean, if the number isn't right, should we make it right in order to make the truck the right way for the long term? I mean, I see other cities and towns that are very, very efficient with the proper vehicle. And I'm just trying to see if it's the right way to do things at this particular time, John.
So it is, Mr. Moderator, if I may, so it is the goal to, yes, to actually outfit it the way we talked about. And if things were to change, you know, I may have to come back later to just add that on, particularly if we're talking about the wind plow, which I think is what we're talking about. But that is the goal, to get it outfitted that way from the get-go. We always have a little factor that we put in these prices that the vendors tell us because of the lead time in ordering them. And I just wanted to caution town meeting that because everything is so volatile right now, you know, it's concerned a little bit. But you'll probably see me coming back if we couldn't outfit it the way that we were thinking about outfitting it. We'll come back to town meeting and ask for more funding.
Thank you, John.
Ms. Hughes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Betsy Hughes, Precinct 7. John, you know, with all due respect on this, I'm just wondering if there's a way that you could delay these for another year only because we're in a pandemic year. The budget's tight. We already, our budget is really large now. And I just feel like if there are opportunities for us to defer some of these large ticket items, even, you know, six months or whatever, and to see where we are in terms of local receipts and the rest of it, as Paul was talking before. And again, this is, you know, you add it together, it's almost $400,000. So, you know, I don't doubt that at some point we need to do this. My question is, can we delay it and not do it now until we know a little bit better where we stand?
So, Mr. Moderator.
Go ahead, Mr. Sanchez.
So, Betsy, we So, Betsy, we've already gone through that process. Our capital plan for FY '22 was much larger than the $400,000. If you, if you see the years past, we always go way over $500,000 on the yearly budget for vehicles. So we actually trimmed that from the get-go. And because we, anything that we could put out for, you know, out of years, we did that, and we submitted like that to both capital, ways and means and the selectmen. So these are, as you notice, it's only highway vehicles. You don't see any water, you don't see any sewer, you don't see any cemetery, you don't see anything else here. This is our prime vehicles that we use for plowing. As you know, over the last few years, we've been having problems getting contractors to plow for the town. And I've been very grateful that we have the vehicles and the people within the DPW to actually complete the snow and ice operations. So that's why we only have three. If you, again, if you look at years past, we're coming for a lot more of a request than what we have right now. So I would recommend that town meeting does approve those for now, for this year, for that reason.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Anything further, Ms. Hughes?
No, that's fine. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, John.
Any further questions from anyone? Seeing none, let's put this to a vote. Vehicle replacement, the DPW, $399,000.
Mr. Moderator, the chorus room votes four, zero in favor.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Music Theory Room votes four in favor. One opposed?
There being seventy-three in favor and nine opposed, motion passes.
Mr. Moderator, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second it.
Got to stay here for this vote.
It's not debatable. Let me think, can we, can we have you raise your hands electronically to see if you want to adjourn?
Now, take the motion, take the vote.
Actually, take a vote?
Take a vote.
All right, as the music room walks out the door, we're five in favor, zero opposed.
Mr. Moderator, chorus room is four in favor, zero opposed.
Give them fifteen seconds, Amy. Yes, we need a poll. One word, adjourn, question mark, fifteen seconds. Fifteen seconds, Amy, not a minute. I can't decide how to, how to adjourn in fifteen seconds, there's something wrong here.
That's not very nice, Bill.
There being plenty of people for and only a few against, we're adjourned.